I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to be held to stand one mission under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah.
The order or deletion of any item on this agenda is subject to modification at the meeting. The board may vote to recess into an executive session for the purpose of obtaining legal advice from the board's attorney on any matter listed on the agenda pursuant to A R S thirty-eight dash four thirty-one point oh three A and three. Role call, District One.
Crosby, sir.
District Two.
Supervisor English is present.
And for District Three Supervisor Judd, I'm here to represent them. Members of the public may attend this meeting via Microsoft Teams computer or mobile app or via phone by calling six oh two six oh nine seven five one three or eight 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 six eight zero sixty-seven fourteen, conference ID eight seventy-six four ninety-nine four sixty-seven pound. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call five two zero four three two ninety-two hundred four direction. The board may permit public comment during the discussion of any item on the agenda. To speak on an agenda item or during the call to the public complete in return, the speaker requests form to the clerk of the board prior to the start of the meeting. Note that some attachments may be updated after the after the agenda is published. This means that some presentation materials displayed at the board meeting may differ slightly from the attached version. This, we're going to have call to the public now, and this is the time for the public to comment. Members of the board may not discuss items that are not specifically identified on the agenda. So I will just received this stack, so. We're going to start with Alfred Kern.
All right, everybody knows my name is Alfred Kern. I've been coming to the, oh, I live at thirty-four sixty east of Green Wash in Douglas, Arizona. I've been coming to the meetings for the last seventeen months, twice a month, and nothing has been done again. But since the last meeting, I did call Gail Griffin, and she called me back. And the day after I called, there was traffic counters on the roads that I keep telling you about, the, about Cipriano, San Mateo, and Madrona, those, those three roads. In the past three weeks, they've been graded twice. No homes on these roads. Now, I don't know how I can explain this, but if you got no homes, you're not collecting any gas tax from them. You know, one of the first things that is, that comes out is it's, it's not your property tax that pays for grading the roads, it's the gas tax. Well, then, we got over thirty homes back there that are paying gas tax. Cipriano, San Madrona, and San Mateo and Madrona have no roads, or no homes on it, so they're not paying any gas tax. So like I said, they put traffic counters on those three roads, and they've graded those three roads twice in the past three weeks. Figure it out. They need, they need to determine, and, and English, you need to determine that it's the roads that have the most homes on them and the most traffic on them should be, should be graded. It's part of the supervisor's job is, is to determine which roads should be added and which roads should be dropped. Come on, we're not talking rocket science. It doesn't take too much to figure out that, gee, if you don't grade the roads that have any homes on it, you can start grading the roads that do have homes on it. You say, well, it's, you gotta, you gotta drop a road to add a road? Well, then do it.
You.
Forget it.
Our next speaker is Frances Alvarez. And Mr. Kern remembered, but just a reminder, when you do come up to the microphone, introduce yourself and give your address. Thank you.
I am Frances Alvarez from Miracle Valley, Hereford, Arizona, native from Miracle Valley, and I'm here to speak against no demolition of Miracle Valley Bible College facilities. And I know it's kind of been on hold because the historical site has come in and legally put a little hold on there, I believe. But I want to finish strong. I don't know how many is here to speak on that behalf. I notice it's kind of dwindled away in hopes that the historical has helped in that area. But I want to finish strong. I don't want to grow weary in well doing, because I know I shall reap if I faint not, and so I'm here knocking once again. Yesterday was my dad's, it would have been his hundred and one birthday. He was a part of Miracle Valley from the very beginning, so was my mother before A. Allen was given that property, when he was a minister throughout the world. He had his offices in Dallas, Texas, and she was his secretary there. And so yesterday, being my dad's birthday, I had made some posts, and I had put my dad working in the record press there in Miracle Valley and making the records. And back then, they were red and purple and blue and yellow and green. Those were the colors of the records. Pretty fun running through the record press office as he made them and watching him cut those off and colors dropping to the ground. Just a little bit of background, because we're talking about history here, but I thought about my daddy. He would have been here, and he would have been knocking on each of your doors, handing you literature and paper why you need to keep this place intact. They were the last ones that remained there on that property, not on that property, but across the street there that was apart from the very beginning until they passed away, as I shared with you, before that my mom passed last year, and their residency still is there. But having posted that, I even had people messaging me yesterday, we would really like to come see that place. That place really still has a, a anointing upon it, that people still come, they are refreshed, they are revived, hope is revived, their spirit is revived, they are healed. And so I had two people, one, a couple from a reservation saying, I would really like to come visit that place, just from the pictures and the reports I was giving. Another from New, North Carolina said, we would like to come and visit, we'd like to be a part of that. And so I just want to share something. It's a song that somebody had written years ago, but it reminds me of Miracle Valley property. And so when you hear the lighthouse, I want you to hear about that tabernacle there. It truly was, oops, there. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Teresa Walsh, and thank you, Teresa.
Teresa Walsh, Sierra Vista. So thank you for allowing me to speak briefly. So I'm a candidate for District One County Supervisor for 2024. I'm looking forward to the opportunity to help in all the people in Cochise County. I'm a retired U.S. Army Colonel, thirty-five years in military and federal service. And I started as a private E-two in nineteen eighty-five Fort Huachuca, retired as a Colonel in twenty eighteen. So I have over thirty-two years military service around the world. I'm a combat veteran with a Bronze Star. And after my retirement, I worked for Congresswoman Ann Kirkpatrick as their Director of Constituent Services and Director Cochise County Outreach. I'm involved in many veteran organizations, like the BFW, the DAV, Cochise-serving veterans. I was the President Women's Army Corps Chapter, and now I'm on the Board of Trustees for the Canyon Vista Medical Center. I'd like to thank all the employees of Cochise County for all their hard work, and thank you again for the opportunity to speak today.
I want to, Madam Chair, do I get to make campaign speeches also?
I, he wants to know if he could make a campaign speech also.
I think it is a campaign speech.
No, that was an introduction. She's letting people know that she is running, not necessarily a campaign speech.
Okay.
How do we, how do we tell the difference in the future, Ms. Roberts?
She's just giving information on herself and letting people know that she's running for a candidate. She was not out here soliciting votes or asking for signatures or anything of that like.
Okay. The next speaker is Mr. Steve Allen.
Okay, I'm speaking from
He's on teams.
Golden, Montana today. Can you hear me okay?
You're not very clear. Can you try getting closer to the microphone?
Is that any better at all?
Yes, a lot better.
Okay, my name is Steve Allen, and I live at twenty-one twenty Broadway Street in Helena, Montana, but I lived one time at Miracle Valley, and so I am here representing Miracle Valley Oasis Center. I simply want to make one very quick and short point today to ensure that everyone is aware of what the Arizona law states regarding that property at Miracle Valley. Arizona statute four one dash eight six two, which is the Arizona law, begins by saying, "In cooperation with the state Historical Preservation Office, each state agency shall establish a program to locate inventory and nominate to the Arizona Register of Historical Places all properties that are under the agency's control or ownership and that appear to meet the criteria for inclusion on the register." In the, that's the end of the quote of the statute. The property and the buildings at Miracle Valley not only appear to meet the criteria, but they have already been declared by the State Historical Preservation Office to be nationally historic. And then that law goes on to say, "Each agency shall exercise caution to assure that the property is not inadvertently sold, transferred, demolished, or substantially altered, or allowed to deteriorate significantly." So the point I want to make is to be sure that you as supervisors are fully aware of your responsibility to set up a plan to sell the property to somebody who has the funds required to purchase it, as well as to make sure that the ones who want to purchase it intend to preserve the buildings as the state law requires. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker in person is Kara Harris.
Good morning, Board. My name is Kara Harris, and I'm a resident of Whitestone, Arizona. I live at twenty-two sixty-five North Mustang Heights Road. I'm going to start out reading an email that my friend Randall Limbach wrote to Ms. Judd, because I thought it's relevant. He said, "Supervisor Judd, our county and nation will continue to nullify the will of we the people unless you support and take action to eradicate electronic machine voting. There are mountains of evidence which support such a need," and he referenced an article he sent you, "you and your colleagues have seen the evidence. If there were even a single doubt as to the security of our elections, the shifting of even one precious vote, why would you not support and deliver what the United States and Arizona Constitution demand? You, and he, and I, all, and our entire nation, live in a most unique moment in history, and you have a responsibility to comply with your oath of office. I implore you to do what is right, take a deliberate stance for rightness, and leave a legacy of goodness and justness and of godliness. Sincerely, Randall Limbach." Now, I'd like to add Kara Harris here. I saw the movie The Sound of Freedom. Did you see it, Ms. Judd? Have you seen the interviews of Tim Ballard, who has rescued thousands of children trafficked for prostitution? If you did not see the movie, I hope you've seen some of his interviews where he was quoted, because he is a Mormon by religion, where his wife challenged him to do something and said, "Will you lose my salvation for what you don't do?" The people that are holding office right now are very possibly holding it illegally because of a lack of intention, election integrity. We are asking, one day, one vote, count them, do it by precinct, do the right thing, or you might lose your salvation.
Our next speaker is Johnny Lee Wilson, Senior.
Johnny Lee Wilson, Senior. I live in Sierra Vista, Arizona, and I want you to know that I don't hate any of you. I dislike some of the things you do. I want to thank Tom Crosby for being a constitutionalist. He's, I've been coming here a year and a half, and I finally got enough nerve a few months ago to speak. And he's the only one that I ever hear state anything about the Constitution. We get up, and we, why do we pledge allegiance to the flag when people aren't following the Constitution? And I agree with something that Ann English said a few weeks ago, when she said, "Well, we don't know all the laws." And that's true. Nobody knows all the laws, but you got your helpers over here that should be reading books every day and telling you what the law is. They are just mailing ballot stuff. Is it legal? I don't think it is. Well, we got like eighty-six thousand people in our county that's registered to vote. They sent out seventy-five thousand roughly. My numbers aren't going to be right, because I'm pretending I'm working for CNN today, so I can say what I want to say. But anyway, fifty thousand of them didn't even get mailed back in. How can that be a real election? It, it, it doesn't make any sense. And then forgetting about Proposition one thirty-two, I don't, you can skirt around or whatever, but the guy that put it in, and all of us that voted for it, you raise any new taxes, it's got to pass by two-thirds of a vote. If you don't like that, quit your job, go work for somebody else. But anyway, I just, I'm getting, getting upset. So I want you to follow the Constitution, and this, I know I didn't sign up to talk on the second agenda, but you're going to try to pass up some kind of a budget today, when you got a lawsuit hanging against you, to try to stop the illegal election. So how can you pass that? You shouldn't even think about passing that. And another comment, wasn't it great that they found cocaine in the White House? Don't that make you, that absolutely love to be a citizen of the United States? I mean, that's, my shirt says USA. I love the USA. I love Arizona. I love Cochise County. And I'll probably be here till I'm going to the other side. But anyway, I don't know what else to say. We keep coming here, and I'm going to keep coming until you bring back paper ballots, one day voting, so we know. And it doesn't matter if you're Democrat, Republican, Independent, whatever, everybody's vote should count. And I'm not against anybody that does it legally. Oh, anyway, got to go.
That concludes our call to the public today. Our first, first item on the agenda is our consent agenda items one through nine.
Chair, I move we accept consent agenda items one through nine.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries unanimously. We begin today with a public hearing, and I need a motion for that. Item number ten.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve a series nine liquor store, new liquor license application submitted by Andrea Lukowitsz for Bowie Travel Center, located at twelve seventy-five Business Loop I-ten, exit three six six Bowie, Arizona eight five six zero five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Laura Lowenheim, can you let us know what we need to know about this?
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is a new series nine store liquor license application submitted for Bowie Travel Center, twelve seventy-five Business Loop I-ten, exit three sixty Bowie, Arizona eight five six oh five. The application's been reviewed and recommended for approval by the appropriate departments. Public taxes are on the, for the parcel are current. The notice and application were posted as required by state law, and no formal protests were received. The applicant has paid a hundred dollar processing fee, and board staff is recommending approval.
Going to open the public hearing on this item, the new series nine liquor license. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to that or on teams? Hearing then, I'll close that public hearing and call for a vote, or is there any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries. Item number eleven is Developmental Services adopting a resolution. It's in our Planning Division, and I need a motion on that.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt Resolution twenty-three eighteen to approve docket CPA dash twenty-three dash zero two Frug, a minor amendment to the Comprehensive Plan Growth Area and Land Jurisdiction map of the Cochise County Comprehensive Plan, and adopt zoning ordinance twenty-three eleven to approve docket RZ twenty-three oh nine to rezone parcels two oh two dash seven six dash two two seven A and two oh two dash seven six dash zero nine eight A from SR forty-three Single Household Residential, one dwelling per acre, to RU four Rural, one dwelling per four acres pursuant to the application of Mr. Mark Frug.
Sir.
We have a motion and a second, and now we have an explanation by Christine McLaughlin, our Planning Division Manager.
Thank you. Good morning. This is an applicant-initiated Comprehensive Plan map amendments and a concurrent rezoning request. The applicant is Mr. Mark Frugi, who is in the audience today. The current growth area and designation is B Neighborhood Conservation. The current zoning is SR forty-three Residential, one dwelling per acre. The proposed growth area and designation is D Rule. The proposed zoning is RU four. There is no area plan in place. The existing use is vacant and undeveloped. The applicant proposes developing the site as a residential homestead. Here is the location in the county. There are two parcels separated by right-of-way, which prevent their combination. In total, this application equals eighteen point six three acres. Each parcel exceeds the mandatory minimum acres requirement for RU four, which is four acres.
Excuse me, someone is on teams and needs to mute themselves. Thank you. I'm sorry. Proceed.
On the graphic, I include the growth categories from our comp plan. Anything not color-coded is category D, which encompasses over ninety percent of the county. Growth categories are near population centers like cities and other census designated places like Palominas and Alphita. Wilcox has a large radius of growth category B. This request is at the northern outskirts of that area where indicated on the graphic. Here are some photos of the area. It's very rural and agricultural. The parcels are located within the Bell Ranch subdivision, which was originally platted in nineteen seventy-two, before the institution of zoning in Cochise County. Most of the surrounding parcels are one acre in size, at least on our map. In nineteen ninety-six, several partial plat abandonment occurred south of the subject area, and the area remains largely undeveloped to this day. Here's the graphics showing the land use. On the southern end is where those plat abandonment occurred, so you can see larger parcels, still residentially zoned. The applicant's parcels are outlined in black and hatched. And here's the current zoning. All that brown RU four property to the north and east is state trust land. And here's an aerial of the area. Although platted in the nineteen seventies, there's almost no development in the area, residential or otherwise. Again, this is a dual application for a comp plan amendment and rezoning. On this slide are the factors for and against the comp plan amendment. Specifically, there is no pattern of growth. The area remains undeveloped. Most of the residential development we have seen has either been in Wilcox, where there is infrastructure like sewer and water to support smaller lots, or in large lots with rural zoning outside of this area. The previous plat abandonment and lack of growth in the area support this request. However, it will break up the existing land use pattern, not quite touching the rural land use to the north. Also, I received six letters from the public regarding this request, for and support to an opposition. Regarding the rezoning requests, the zoning regulations provide fifteen criteria for evaluating rezoning requests. The proposed rezoning complies with a majority of those factors, including the ones specifically mentioned on this page. It will change the parcel from residential to rule, which allows a greater range of permitted uses, and will break up the existing SR forty-three land use pattern. This docket was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their regular hearing on June fourteenth. The commission recommended approval. I apologize, the vote was actually eight to one, not unanimous, as stated on the slide. Staff also recommends approval of both the comp plan amendments and the rezoning. There is both a resolution and a zoning ordinance attached to the memo for your consideration. Two motions are necessary. This concludes my presentation. The applicant, again, is in the audience. Both he and I are available for any questions.
I have a quick question. So is the four acres, is there four acres on each side of that road, or does the four acres include? I didn't quite get that.
Yeah. If you see in this graphic, there's two different parcels identified. Both exceed four acres. They're about eight or nine acres each.
Okay.
On each side.
And the second question, you said some were opposed and four. How many were four and how many were opposed?
Four were four, the request, and two were against.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
What were their reasons for being against it?
Um, just that they felt there was enough rural zoning already available within the county, and also the other concern was property value.
Were there?
All right. I'm looking at this page here, which was labeled number three, I believe, and I see the, those squares indicating category A, B, and C. So if you're talking about category D, is that everything else that isn't A, B, and C that we're looking at?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And on page five, I believe it was, it talked about adequate water, and I wonder how was adequate water determined and measured?
Currently, there is no water on the site. There is no well. The applicant will either need to drill a well and get it registered through the state, or he will need to haul water to the site.
Okay. And one of those was, was proposed to have a stock pond, so there's no way for him to put water in his proposed stock pond at present.
Correct.
Okay, interesting.
Um, just for clarification, that could be a stock pond that is filled with rains and, and runoff from the hills as well. So
Correct.
You know, most people with stock ponds don't fill them with a well in our area, just for clarification. All right. Is there any other questions or discussion?
Yes, I'd just like to comment that I'm in favor of rural and less dense property use, and that concludes my remarks.
And I need now to open the public hearing. I hadn't done that prior, but let me open a public hearing on this item, adopting this resolution for the zoning change. Is there anyone on teams or in the audience that would like to speak to this change? Hearing then, I'll close the public hearing. I'll use the floor hammer. Okay. Now, if there's no other discussion, checking, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye and the motion carries unanimously. Our next one is a zoning ordinance twenty-three twelve. I need a motion for that one.
Madam Chair, I move we adopt zoning ordinance twenty-three dash twelve to rezone parcels one oh six dash one five dash zero four two and one oh six one five dash zero four three from SR forty-three Residential, one dwelling per forty-three thousand square feet to RU four Rural, one dwelling per four acres pursuant to the application of Mr. Dale Dickamore.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. This will also be a public hearing, so if anyone is here to speak, I will call for that in a moment. But first, we'll have our explanation by Dan Cox, with the Director of Development Services.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is another downzoning in the Babo Kamari of two more
two more parcels. You've seen quite a few of these in the past, but you haven't seen one in a while. These parcels were rezoned in the mid 2000s, this one in 2005, attaching a condition that they submit a subdivision plat within 18 months. Obviously, in 2008, the market for housing changed dramatically. The area has not developed as anticipated, and therefore, to remove this condition, the property owner, Mr. Dickamore, is required to rezone his property back to RU4, which is, again, a decrease in density. The area is designated rural. It's currently vacant, and the proposed use of the property would be single-family homes. Here's a map of the property, Parcels 43 and 42. An aerial image of the property. You can see there's not much development out there currently. Um, staff does analyze these rezoning requests. It does comply with 11 of the applicable rezoning factors. It is keeping with the character, and we received no factors against. Staff did mail letters to surrounding property owners at 300 feet, published a legal ad in the newspaper, and we have received no responses. Um, I can answer any questions you have. Planning and Zoning Commission did hear this at their June 9th meeting and did recommend approval to the board, unanimous approval to the board.
I, at times, I don't see this as stepping back, especially with the uncertainty we have with, you know, the, the kind of development that goes on here, water and things. I don't see this as stepping back. They're, you know, taking a, I, downzoning is a good thing, more rural to me is a good thing. So, were there any other discussion before I open the public hearing? Or questions?
No.
Or Mr. Coxworth? Okay. Hearing none, I will open the public hearing on this item, zoning ordinance 2312. And hearing nobody asking to speak, I'm going to close the public hearing. Hearing no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 The chair votes aye and the motion carries unanimously. Item number 13, adopt, oh, we can have a motion on that.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt Resolution 2319 authorizing the purchase agreement for the property located at 665 North Garden Avenue, Sierra Vista, Arizona 85635, Tax Parcel 106 dash 65 dash 017A, and authorizing the county administrator to sign and execute the necessary closing paperwork to effectuate the purchase.
Second.
Hey, we have an explanation prepared for this by Mr. Richard Karwetska, the county administrator.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Supervisor English, Supervisor Crosby. Uh, in speaking with Pioneer Title, they insisted that in order for the closing to occur, which is July 17th, the board would need to adopt this resolution. And basically, this resolution is restating what the board has already done with one addition. Back in March 28th, 2023, the board did approve, after the sheriff's presentation, to purchase the facility for $4.5 million, which is located on Garden Avenue. Now, this money came to the sheriff's department through a DMA grant, so this is not general fund money. The one addition that is in this resolution is that we need a signer for all these documents, and, and the resolution indicates that I, that the board would give me the power, just for this one instance, to execute any and all agreements regarding this purchase. And that concludes my presentation.
Are there any questions?
I have a comment. I'm looking at the, the resolution, and it says, whereas Cochise County has been searching for an appropriate facility to house the Cochise County Sheriff's Office Southeast Arizona Combined Intelligence and Border Operations Center. That's one of the wherestes, and I would like to, once again, publicly state that my platform is to prevent illegal entry. So if intelligence means taking pictures of illegal aliens and contraband getting away and catching and releasing, I'm not going to be in favor of that in the long term.
Okay. Are there any other comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 The chair votes aye and the motion carries unanimously. Item number 14, could I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move we approve County Policy 1604 Public Safety Personnel Retirement System, PSPRS, and Corrections Office Officers Retirement Plan for Pension Funding effective July 11, 2023, and formally accept the county share of the assets and liabilities under the system based on the system's actuarial valuation report.
I'll second the motion.
Hey, our explanation on that one will also be by Richard Karwetska.
Thank you once again, Madam Chair. Supervisor English, Supervisor Crosby. As you can see, every year we come before you to approve the policy. And if you look at Policy 1604, the changes are, or the additions to that year 2024. So in the year 2024, for PSPRS tiers one and two, the actuarial information, the assets, as you can see, increased from last year. However, also the accrued liability increased from last year. Uh, and then the unfunded actuarial accrued liability decreased from $34 million to $32 million, which leaves our funding ratio at 48%. Moving further in the policy, for corp tiers one and two, the actuarial information for years 2024 for the detention, the assets have increased to 8.6 million. Also, the accrued liability has increased. The unfunded accrued liability increased slightly to 6.6 million from 6.5 million of last year, and our funding ratio is 56.7. One thing I would like to note before a vote or any discussion is that this coming up fiscal year, we will be looking to contract for the independent actuarial analysis, which is located in Section 4C, which indicates every five years, we shall contract out for that independent actuarial analysis, because this is the information that we receive. So something independent. So with that, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Are there any questions on this one?
Just a, a comment, but the notice to the public is the fact that the legislature wanted to make sure that the public understood that the, every county in the state had a plan to pay PSPRS, because it's been on the news and, and everyone talks about the unfunded liabilities with PSPRS. So this, this is our intent today, is to let people know that we have an intention of paying what we owe, and we are agreeing or accepting, whether you consider that agree, accepting their actuarial valuation at this time, until we have our own private valuation of our resources that are in PSPRS. So it's really kind of a pro forma, but it's to let the public know that we're not forgetting about PSPRS and have every intention of paying so that our people who work in PSPRS and corp know that they're going to be taken care of.
Thank you, Supervisor English.
I have further comment.
Yes.
So the combined total for both corp and PSPRS is $39.4 million in unfunded liability. And we, I'm very glad that we put $8 million on it last year. I was trying to be responsible. Uh, nonetheless, I would note that I, that I believe that only decreased our liability $2 million. Is that correct, Mr. Mr. Frisby?
And I, Supervisor Crosby, I can actually answer that. It did decrease
$2 million.
$2 million, but also increased our assets. So it's reflected in our assets.
I'm looking at the funded ratio, which improved from 40% funded to 48% funded. I'm really happy about that.
Yeah.
That's a good thing. But what I wanted to point out to everybody is still a huge amount of money or liability for the county that everybody must realize that, that exists out there. Uh, and, and, and like I've said many times, it is not like a mortgage. We put 8 million on it and it went down 2 million. So that's very significant to realize that, even though it's talked about in terms of actuarial and, and, and terms that sound like a mortgage, it is not a mortgage. So we're in a better ratio, but nowhere near the goal. We're talking about 48% funded. Okay? Uh, so that, and, and the goal is to be 100% funded. We're nowhere near it. So that should have been a, I mean, it, I, I hope it will be a significant factor to my colleagues in the future. I guess that concludes my comments. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And, and it will be, and it, we would like to become 100% funded. In simple terms, that would mean we were paying so much into the system through our current employees that the retirees would have enough money to take out their retirement. That's not the condition we're in, and, and actually, this fund had a plan initially to, to create funding. And at the state level, they were going to invest, and there would be money to pay retirement later, but that hasn't worked out, and so we are, we are stuck with this solution, and we are working hard at it. Mr. Crosby is right. We, we have, we would like to do better, but we've done everything we can. And thank you for going through this. And now I will call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
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 The chair votes aye and the motion carries unanimously. Okay, item number 15, need a motion for that.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve Community Enhancement Fund expenditures for District 3, tipping fees for St. Vincent de Paul to dispose of spoiled and junk donations in the amount not to exceed $2,000.
Second.
Okay. So this is my district and my issue, and whenever we get to about this time of year, a lot of things pile up for our, our, we don't have a lot of room or a lot of people or anything in our community, and so St. Vincent de Paul has come upon a, a crisis, they believe, and I, if I could contribute $2,000 to clean up the community, clean up their location in downtown, get that put in the, the disposal, I, I have requested that, $2,000 um, for them to be able to go to, put all that in the dump. And they're doing all the work by themselves, but we, that would be very, very helpful to them. So I ask your consideration to the board to use the community enhancement fund.
That sounds like a great idea. Is it legal?
It, it's working in the community, and it's a nonprofit, so it would not be considered a gift of any sort, so.
Because, because it's a nonprofit. Okay, thank you.
Okay. So that, if that's all the discussion on it, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Before you vote, I just want the public to know, we're not giving this money to St. Vincent de Paul. It's to pay solid waste for the disposal, so it isn't a gift to St. Vincent de Paul. It's a gift to the community to, to get it cleaned up. So I just wanted to make that statement, so people didn't think that we were gifting St. Vincent de Paul with $2,000.
And actually, before that, to go along with that, it's not to exceed 2,000. They may only spend 800 or 500, and that's all they, that, that, the dump, the tipping station would receive that much. The rest would just go back into the fund. So it is, in, in that stat, in that sense, it is not a check written to St. Vincent de Paul in any way. Um, okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 The chair votes aye and the motion carries. Item number 16, we could have a motion.
Madam Chair, I move we approve the Arizona Criminal Justice Commission ACJC Drug Gang and Violent Crime Control Grant Agreement, DC 24 dash 021, in the amount of $148,186.18 between the ACJC and Cochise County, effective July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion in a second. We have Brian McIntyre, our county attorney.
Madam Chair.
And that would be Christine.
County Attorney McIntyre is unable to be here today, so I'll be presenting the item. This is the burn grant that, it's a recurring grant that occurs every year, the drug grant, drug, excuse me, drug gang and violent crime grant. It pays for 1.6 prosecutors in the county attorney's office, and it has a match of $37,046.55.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Roberts? I don't hear any, so if there's no other discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries unanimously. Item number 17 is now up.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the Crime Victim Compensation Grant VC dash 24 dash 002 between the Arizona Criminal Justice Commission and the Cochise County Attorney's Office in the amount of $125,341, effective July 1, 2023 through June 30th, 2024.
Second.
Okay. That will also be, no, that will not be presented by Ms. Christine Roberts. I don't, I don't know your name for the record.
Annette Kidos. I'm actually the victim compensation coordinator for Cochise County. Um, this grant is
Get a little bit closer to the microphone.
Yes, ma'am. This grant is to assist victims of a crime with medical bills, travel to court, crime scene cleanup, um, as well as counseling for anything that may have happened within the crime itself. The funds are coming from a COVID, from a COVID relief fund. Um, so it is a federal funding.
Um, any questions on that?
I wouldn't mind hearing the purposes of the expenditures again, please.
The purposes of the expenditure, these expenditures are to assist the victims of, of crime in Cochise County. Um, so any victim that happens, or anybody that has been a victim of a crime in Cochise County um, would benefit from these, from these funds. So it gets presented also to my board um, in regards to uh, what the crime is, if the crime does qualify, and then if what expenditures that the victim does present to the board, then the board makes a decision on approving those funds or not, depending on the claim and the crime.
It could be a broad range of miscellaneous expenses that a victim brings to the board and then the
Yes, sir.
makes a determination.
Yes, sir. It can be medical. It can be mental health. It can be travel to court. It could be travel coming and talking to our prosecutors. It could also be assistance with prescriptions. Um, in order for these funds to be given or awarded to the victims, any other means do have to be exerted first, so they have to go through their medical. They would have to go through, say, their house insurance. They would have to go through, if they have like a GoFundMe. All of those negotiations also with medical providers to bring those costs down, so that we're using the minimal amount of the funds to be able to assist as many victims as we can possible.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, how do you make sure that the disbursements that the board makes for a victim go towards a purpose that is stated and understood by the, by the board?
Um, that is where I come in and put in the agenda for my board. I present the, the police report, as well as any of their expenses that they had, whether it be the medical or the counseling. Um, if it's, for example, for a counseling, the, the counselor does need to provide that it is specifically towards that crime.
Okay. Well, I guess I'm, I'm wondering, how do you make sure that, well, how does, how does the, the money get from the board to whoever receives the money with, with security that everybody knows it's a taxpayer, that it's going where it's supposed to go?
Okay, um, the money I requested from our finance department, and the finance department then goes in and specifically makes the checks either to the victim or to the hospital or provider.
Okay. Uh, in the case where you make a check specifically to the victim, how, how do you control how the money is spent once the victim has possession of the check?
Um, that money is supposed to go specifically for any out-of-pockets expenses that they have already done. Um, so they have to prove that they have made those out-of-pocket expenses first.
How do they prove that to the
By showing the receipts.
I see.
Yes, and how they paid. So whether it's cash, credit card, and has to be shown within their name as well.
I see. Well, that's what I was getting at. Thank you very much. Your name was Annette Kidos.
Yes, yes, sir. Annette Kidos.
Okay. And I was wondering, what, what's your title again, now that, now that I heard all about it?
Victim Compensation Coordinator.
Okay.
Are you a employee of the county attorney?
Yes, sir.
I see.
All right. Um, I would like to, if there's any, not any other discussion, I'd like to call for the vote. All right, um, I would like to, if there's any, not any other discussion, I'd like to call for the vote of this. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries unanimously. The next one, item number eighteen.
Madam Chair, I move we approve inter-fund transfer of one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one dollars and thirty-two cents from Criminal Justice Enhancement Fund one three six dash zero six zero zero dash zero six one zero to fill the gap fund one thirty-eight, zero six zero zero, zero six one zero to move funds that were transferred from the court to an incorrect fund line in fiscal year twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, and fiscal year twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one.
I second the motion.
Okay, and this is very interesting. Kenny Reeves is supposed to speak on it. Are you gonna speak on it?
Madam Chair.
Christine Roberts will speak on it.
Basically, this, the inter-fund transfer is just to move funds that were incorrectly credited on to incorrect fund line. It'll move it, um, from Criminal Justice Enhancement Fund one three six to one three eight, in doing that, doing so that will resolve the majority of the negative cash balance in Fund one three eight.
Okay, and it makes it sound like it was accidentally put into the enhancement fund, was that the case? When we corrected that problem, I'm guessing.
Yes, this will correct the majority of the problem. Thank you.
All right. I meant that maybe that wouldn't happen next time, but okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 The chair votes aye and the motion carries unanimously. Item number nineteen for county schools.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the master agreement, master services agreement with Navigate three sixty LLC and the Cochise County School Superintendent for Security Monitoring Services at all county public and charter schools, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three through June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-six, in the amount of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, seven hundred and sixty-eight, two hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, and I should know your name.
Uh, I'm Cynthia Myers. I'm the Outreach Coordinator for the Schools Office.
Madam Chair, I'm here.
And Jackie Clay is also online with us, our Cochise County School Superintendent. And Cynthia Myers will be giving our, our-
I will.
Where will Jackie? You guys work it out.
Yeah, I'm just here to answer the question.
Okay, Ms. Jackie Clay.
Madam, Madam Chair and members of the board, Cochise County Superintendent, representing their stakeholders as it relates to school safety, ARS forty-one dash seventeen thirty-three has selected Navigate three sixty as its preferred vendor. The decision was based on the three vendor vetting and comparison mythology. The process involved reviewing vendor, printed materials, Zoom meetings, and imperfect, in-person demonstrations, and after an exhaustive review of all participating vendors, Navigate three sixty was confirmed to have met the requirements outlined in statute, ARS forty-one dash seven thirty-three. Um, we had given you a, a vendor comparison last, um, month. You should have a copy of it with you, and it, the three vendors were Raptor, Navigate three six, three sixty, and Mutual Link. The school safety requires a multi-layered solution when it is examined at the school district level. Stakeholders are looking for interoperability, a partnership with law enforcement, and a complete, complete package of school safety and security needs. As stewards of safety in our schools, a solid action plan includes prevention, preparedness, and recovery, not just response capabilities. Education and training are vital to empowering educator, educational leaders to mitigate school safety issues before incidents escalate. Proper training and collaboration with law enforcement can significantly increase the likelihood of an active shooter emergency, achieving the best, the best possible outcome. Navigate three sixty utilizes hours training and educational tools currently practiced by law enforcement and school districts in Cochise County. Subject to your questions, that's all I have.
So, this, um, Ms. Clay and then Ms. Meyer who's here to answer questions. So this sounds like it's sort of an accumulation of all of the wonderful public safety measures we've tried to put in, and it gives us a way to organize it and bring it together, so it can be monitored and make sure everybody's receiving the same, you know, the same attention and the same, same services, and it, is there anything new about this or exciting, or is it kind of just that continuation of the good work you've already done?
I think it's, it's just bringing everything together. The real whole idea of this particular grant was to focus on response and the interoperability with the sheriff's office. Uh, when we received the money from the sheriff's office and the school's office and went to the superintendent's, we found that their other, you know, needs were in, um, in preparedness and also in the recovery, um, and the prevention aspects of the safety. So we were able to find Navigate three sixty, which covers all of those, and we can bring it together in one platform and be able to help the school districts.
Good. Well, I am, I approve of that, so I think, is there any other questions? Mr. Crosby?
Is that communication gonna go through CCOM?
Uh, I'm not sure exactly how the Sheriff's Department is going to choose to integrate with the PSAP. It has a cellular nine-one-one connection that goes directly through the Sheriff's Department, um, and I'm not sure exactly how the Sheriff's Department will use that, um, with the PSAP, but it does go through the Sheriff's Department PSAP.
Thank you.
Okay. There any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 The chair votes aye and the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Meyer. Thank you, Ms. Clay. So, our next item is-
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board.
You're welcome. Um, our next item is item number twenty.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve grant agreement HT dash twenty-three dash twenty-nine twelve with the City of Tucson's Southwest Border Arizona Region High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area, or HIDA as it's called, program, and the Cochise County Sheriff's Office to participate in the Southern Arizona Major Investigative Team in the amount of ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars for salaries, partial fringe benefits, services, and supplies, effective January one, twenty twenty-three through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
And our speaker today is Mr. Shanjajanto Lieutenant.
Uh, Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you. Uh, the Sheriff's Office is asking for approval of a reoccurring grant that we get that pays for a task force officer, uh, that's basically assigned at the DEA to support our narcotics fighting, uh, efforts. The, uh, the grant pays for salary with the exception of, um, the full ERE. So we do have to pick up a maximum of about forty-six thousand dollars, which is paid for through our Smart and Safe, uh, Arizona Act, otherwise known as the marijuana money. But this has been a reoccurring grant that's occurred, um, for many, many years, and it really helps us, bolster our narcotics fighting efforts. Any questions?
Is it the same person all the time?
Um, no, we, we rotate. Um, it's not annually, it, it's usually no more than five years. But, um, we, we've cycled through. Our, our current deputy's been there about a year, so he'll probably be there in another four years.
And he doesn't have patrol duties? He's specifically designed just for this program and works with the DEA, you say?
He's not solely, um, reporting to DEA. We, we do reach out and, and borrow him from time to time, but his primary assignment is over at the task force.
Are there any other questions? I hear, don't hear anymore. Um, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh.
Aye, pardon.
And the chair votes aye and the motion carries unanimously. Uh, item number twenty-one.
Madam Chair, I move we approve the designation of Richard Carwoska County Administrator as a certifying officer for the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Environmental Review Records, including the initial environmental review record and subsequent owner occupied housing rehabilitation environmental reviews, attached Appendix A for each assisted housing unit.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Ms. Bronson.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair and Board. As you know, the Development Services is in the process of preparing the Community Development Block Grant application. As part of that application, we're required to submit environmental review record documents. Customarily, the county administrator for local jurisdictions is, uh, appointed as the certifying officer. We are required to have a certifying officer sign those documents, and so we're requesting that our county administrator, uh, be approved as the, be designated rather as the certifying officer.
Who does the environmental review?
Uh, Development Services does it. It's because it's a federal grant, the NEPA process, uh, is part of the process. It's a fairly low-level review, but it is nevertheless required.
We can do it in-house.
Yes, we're doing it in-house.
All right, is there anything else on that item? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 The chair votes aye and the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Bronson. Our next item number twenty-two.
Madam Chair, I move we approve a twenty-year amended and restated ground lease agreement between Cochise County and the Vogel Family Properties LLC in the amount of one thousand and forty-nine dollars a year to construct a sixty-foot by sixty-foot hangar and associated office space for personal use at the Cochise County Airport in Wilcox.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, Mr. Coxworth.
Good morning, again, Madam Chair, members of the board. So, this is a ground lease at the Cochise County Airport for Mr. Vogel to construct a sixty-by-sixty hangar. The original lease you approved in two thousand and one was for a hundred, one hundred by one hundred. Also, we have a new fixed base operator at the airport who requested that space, and so we've moved Mr. Vogel a little bit down the taxiway, the NEPA process, because it is a, um, federally entitled airport, has been completed for this project, and, uh, Mr. Vogel, I think, is, um, now prepared to fully retire and come out here to Arizona and build his hangar for his aircraft.
So he just had a tentative lease, or was he operating?
He had an approved lease by the Board of Supervisors, but it wasn't fully executed on his end. Um, and then he got caught up in just the price of steel after, and then supply chain after COVID, so it did delay his project for a couple of years, so he's ready to get going on that project again.
So there's nothing out there yet? That's all?
Nothing out there, it's just bare ground.
All right. Thank you. Is there any other questions?
So there is no, there's not going to be a one hundred by one hundred hangar?
That's correct, sir. It'll be a smaller, private hangar for the Vogel family. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 The chair votes aye and the motion carries unanimously. The item number twenty-three is next.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the Hazardous Materials Preparedness Grant Program Award, six nine three J K two two four zero zero one eight H M E P, administered by the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality in the amount of twenty thousand dollars for federal fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, effective October the first, twenty twenty-two, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Mr. Daniel Deschung, our Director of Emergency Services, will present.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you for having me. Uh, this is a twenty thousand dollar grant for the hazardous materials program. Uh, it's a pass-through with the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality managing it that we use for, uh, travel to trainings, conferences, uh, exercise and plans. Uh, this portion will specifically be used for the hazardous material response plan, which is a responsibility of the Local Emergency Planning Committee. Uh, so I ask for the approval of, uh, the grant to expend the funds, and we will ultimately complete that plan within the first quarter of this fiscal year.
And it's money to hire someone for the, to establish a tabletop exercise with the group?
This will specifically be for a, a contractor to write the response plan, and that will be taken to the LEPC for adoption in the fall.
Will that include kind of a survey of where the hazardous materials might be, or only just, hey, if this shows up at any random place, this is how you respond?
Yes, to the latter. It's how we would respond. ADQ has previously completed what you referred to as a commodities flow study, where we look through, look at what is coming through the ports, the highways, the interstate. So that was completed, I believe, within, uh, the last year or two.
Okay.
This is more for our fire departments to have a, a combined understanding of how they would all respond to a situation, wherever that would be, based on the type of material.
All right, that, that's what I was just wondering, I already know what the hazardous materials might be, so. Okay, well, is there any other discussion or question?
Yes.
Okay.
I know that it says October first, twenty twenty-two through September thirtieth, which makes it like nine months late, and then you mentioned something about the first quarter. Could you tell us why it is dated like that? And what did you say about the first quarter in relationship to the dates that we're looking at?
Yes, uh, I wasn't planning on using this grant, using these grant funds until about probably May. We found the contractor and had the time to do the plan, so we won't be doing all of the projects that were applied for, I believe it was two to three years ago, because it's a three-year grant cycle. So now that we have the time and the contractor in place to do the plan, I decided to move forward and bring this to the board.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Hearing no other discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 The chair votes aye and the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, um, number twenty-four, Facilities.
Madam Chair, I move we approve Contract twenty-three dash twenty-two dash F A C dash zero one with Desert Springs Construction and Remodeling LLC for the Finance Department remodel in the amount of one hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars, effective July eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
Good morning.
We didn't have a second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All the, um, Mr. Crowley.
Yes.
Welcome, Facilities Manager.
This, uh, this is a remodeled in, in the Finance Department. It is in dire need of some help, because it is a very tight place. They don't, we don't have any control of how staff moves in, in and out of the department. We have some staff in there that shouldn't be in there, so, uh, that's what we're after, is trying to, uh, get this correct.
Okay, and that is right near our board offices, and, and we kind of are all mixed up in there, so that, that's exciting to see that happen, so. Um, any other comments or questions?
Is this gonna be an expansion of square feet?
No, no, it's, it's all in the same space. It's, it's utilizing the space in a much better fashion. Thank you.
All right, that will be fun to look at the plan. I like plans.
Yeah.
All right, so are there any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 The chair votes aye and the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, item number twenty-five. We're in Health and Social Services now.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve Amendment Three to Intergovernmental Agreement, our IGA, C T R zero five five two eight two, Healthy People, Healthy Communities, between the Arizona Department of Health Services and Cochise Health and Social Services, to revise terms in the amount of five hundred and fifty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars, effective July the first, twenty twenty-three, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Ms. Susan Hegel, our Prevention Services Director, will present.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Today I'm requesting approval of the H P H C IGA. This IGA combines several programs into one shared IGA, which includes Tobacco Prevention, Health in Arizona Policy Initiative, Chronic Disease Prevention, Teen Pregnancy Prevention, and Suicide Mortality Review Programs. The IGA serves people of all ages, youths, teens, adults, and the program addresses, uh, several health priorities, including, but not limited to cardiovascular disease, chronic lower respiratory disease, um, Alzheimer's, obesity, teen pregnancies, tobacco use, work site wellness, school health wellness, and suicide mortality review. The IGA currently funds eight county positions. The total budget for all programs within the IGA is five hundred fifty-six dollars, forty, four hundred and twenty, five hundred fifty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-one. Your approvals are requested.
All right, is there any comments or questions?
No questions.
Okay, I don't hear any. All those in favor, say aye.
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 The chair votes aye and the motion proves unanimously. I'm looking for a motion, and item number twenty-six.
Madam Chair, I move we- Madam Chair, I move we approve Amendment Three to Intergovernmental Agreement, IGA, C T R zero-five-five-two-zero-seven, Public Health Emergency Preparedness Program between the Arizona Department of Health Services and Cochise Health and Social Services to extend the grant program through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four.
I'll second the motion.
A presenter, two presenters now, but Kimberly Mitchell, Public Health Preparedness Program Coordinator.
And? Good morning, Madam Chair, Supervisor English, Supervisor Cosby. Today we're asking for your support and approval on the CDC IGA with FAP. And that is going to be C T R zero-five-five-two-zero-seven. Cochise County Health and Social Services FAP team participates in regional healthcare coalitions meetings and conference calls, maintains our response plans for all public health emergencies, participates in regional emergency preparedness planning, develops and maintains mutual agreements with other jurisdictions and participates in work groups to enhance our med system, which is our Medical Electronic Disease Surveillance and Intelligence System, participates in epidemiologic specific trainings, workshops, conferences and participates in required statewide, regional, public health exercises and S and S receiving staging and storing exercises. We use these funds to improve our preparedness, response and recovery actions. This includes making sure we are fully staffed so we can execute preparedness planning, prepping for any off-site hospitals when needed, or medical sheltering are just a couple of examples. Responding to public health events most recent, our most recent responses would be making sure that our functional and access need patients in the affected area are evacuated from our, like, for example, our Hereford fires. And in recovery, we give out resources that can help our community members to rebuild and provide them with the resources of basic life needs. We also participate in these regional meetings, conferences and workshops, to include national. This is where we bring all our partners and stakeholders together to train and build on new ideas to bring to Cochise County Health and Social Services, as well as making those connections and relationships. This helps with us when we don't have these resources locally or we have used all those up. We also update and establish our, our response plans. And we also, that which helps us guide and prepare and respond to recover to any public health emergencies within the county.
I, I understand, there, there isn't a dollar amount attached here. This is a grant that you already have received and you're extending it another year.
That's right. This will be the fifth year of the grant. And so this is just an amendment to it and this is the five year. So this is just an extension.
Okay.
And I have the funding, one second. It's the last one. It's two hundred forty-one thousand two hundred forty-one dollars, zero cents.
Okay. Also, is there, it's preparedness, but is there also some work to prepare the community, let's say, fire-wise type work? Can you, can you work with those organizations to make sure people are
Yes, so.
ready for emergencies and also controlling vector borne illnesses and things like?
Yes, ma'am. So we do a lot more than just, you know, emergency response plans, just for like hospitals and things like that. We also do vector surveillance. Right now we are in the mosquito season, so we are applying an outreach in the Elfrida area where we hand out supplies. We had our education to the community, talking about those diseases that can be transpired by vector. Not to include, we also do constant rabies surveillance. And we take on those cases with not just the county, but our USDA officer as well, making sure that our facilities are aware of the laws when it comes to rabies and how to receive treatment with them. And so, yes, we do so much more than just, you know, making sure that our hospitals and our long-term healthcare facilities are taken care of. It is, it really helps. It's another response off the emergency management team. It is emergence, the emergency function eight. So we help do all the public responses, health responses for them.
Well, thank you, because that was kind of coming into my mind. Well, there's other needs and it sounds like you're well aware of them.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Is there any other comments or questions?
I got a question. What is biosurveillance?
Biosurveillance is, and I have that right here, biosurveillance is us for, for us to, I have it right here, sorry. So what we do is we surveillance any of the diseases, any and all diseases that could possibly hit our county. Okay, with that, we have modes of detection. One of them is our Arbo scientific company that we have hired to come in to do our surveillance for like our mosquitoes. Where he tests those mosquitoes and then he brings back weekly samples to us, letting us know, okay, well, this is what we see. Did we get any negative or positives out of that? So that's in the detection area, as well as like rabies. While we take in that animal and we send it to the state, the state lab test for the rabies gets back, gets back to us with it as well. And then, of course, their processes for that is very extensive.
Thank you very much. What about surge operations? What does that refer to? You got a note for that too?
No, actually, I got that at the top of my head because when I first started here, we did have a medical surge. And we helped when Canyon Vista asked for assistance because they didn't have staffing to fill all of the beds, their capacity of their beds. So we were able to get with our emergency management and put in a request at the state level, which then the state didn't have those resources. So we reached out to a federal level, which brought in a DOD team. So that's in our medical surge. When it comes to any type of surge, otherwise, like a surge of, right now we're dealing with the Title Forty-two, that we try to prepare our community with by getting our partners to come and come to that table and see what they can offer so that that doesn't sit on the county, on the county. So our, our community partners come in to help with those.
Now I'm, now I'm just wondering how two hundred and forty-one thousand and two hundred and forty-one dollars can do all that?
Wow.
Wow.
They coordinate.
You just coordinate. Oh, okay. Yes, good for you. All right. Well, I just want to say that sounds like you're taking care of a lot of needs that need to be kind of overseen in the community and, and I appreciate you. Thank you for your presentation. Okay, is there any other comments?
What about border health, conduct border health surveillance activities? What's that about?
So with the, with the border health surveillance activities, that really falls along our epidemiologists. We do have a full-time and a contracted epidemiologist. So we do watch the instances of any type of disease that can come through. If they are, if they do come across with anything, then we make sure that they are taken care of in the hospital. But that is really where our border surveillance comes, is any vector crossing or any type of, like our Title Forty-two.
All right. Hearing, any more comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair, yeah, all those opposed?
Aye.
The chair votes aye and the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Twenty-eight.
Madam Chair, I move we approve Intergovernmental Agreement.
Actually skipped one.
Oh.
Twenty-seven. Sorry, yeah, it's a lot of items today.
Approved Government Agreement, G R A S T A T E dash twenty-four dash twelve forty-two dash one between Arizona Early Childhood Development and Health Board, First Things First, Cochise Health and Social Services for the Childcare Health Consultation Strategy in the amount of one hundred fourteen thousand six hundred twenty-five dollars effective July first, twenty-twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion in a second. Ms. Maria Ibarra, RN, Division Director of Clinical Services.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. So it's Myra, just to correct.
Myra.
The intent of this agreement is to fund the Childcare Health Consultation Strategy, which is implemented by our Child Care Health Consultation Team, which is composed of a registered nurse and health educator. What they do is work closely with the childcare centers and provide education to increase their knowledge and compliance with health and safety practices to keep the kiddo safe at these centers.
Well, any questions? Or comments?
I'm looking for the, the source of funding, which is, I saw First Things First, what, what is that funding from?
So First Things First is, excuse me?
I said it's from tobacco, First Things First funding.
So First Things First, it is, it is an implementation for our, for child, childcare health consultation. It is through state. It is tobacco. Yes, it does come from tobacco.
So it's, that's the only source is tobacco taxes?
Yes.
I see.
That's how First Things First is funded. Think about it.
I knew it started out that way. I didn't know if it was still that way.
And if there's no, I think, I think we should just move on. She has another thing to talk to us about in a minute. And so if there's no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 The chair votes aye and the motion carries unanimously. Item number twenty-eight now.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve Intergovernmental Agreement, C T R zero-six-six-four-two-six, Tuberculosis Control between Arizona Department of Health Services and Cochise Health and Social Services in the amount of fourteen thousand dollars effective July one, twenty-twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-eight.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. And we still have Myra Ibarra.
Yes.
Our Ann at the stand. Thank you.
So for the Health Department, we do have the responsibility to conduct screening, investigation and treatment for any suspect TB cases or even latent tuberculosis. You know, the funding is very small, but it still covers some of these expenses. We work very closely with our medical director, Dr. Eric McLaughlin, to provide these services. And that includes testing and treatment. And again, just overview of any active TB cases that we may have in the county.
What is Dr. McLaughlin's role or McLaughlin?
He's our medical director. So he oversees what treatments or orders, signing orders for medications that need to be prescribed and therefore we can treat the patient or the client.
So is, is he part of the county health department?
He is.
In what sense? Does, does he live in the county?
He does not. He works remotely.
Okay. Do you know how many other counties that he is the medical director for?
I do not.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
There any more discussion or questions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and the motion carries unanimously. Item number twenty-nine.
Madam Chair, I move we approve agreement between Cochise Health and Social Services and Cochise County Community College District for the Clinical Practicum and/or Internship, Externship Educational Experiences to Nursing and Allied Health Students effective August first, twenty-twenty-three through July thirtieth, twenty-twenty-eight.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion in second, Ms. Myra Ibarra.
So this memorandum of understanding between Cochise College and the Health Department allows nursing students and allied health students come on over and get their clinical experience. They're partnered up with our medical professionals and they can have on, hands-on experience. We've had this for quite some time and it also is beneficial internally because we can recruit and usually we have high success in keeping them. I was a Cochise College graduate and was able to come and, and learn what public health is. And I'm here now. So it really does make a difference for our healthcare and having more nurses available here. So they'll be working with the Health Department and with detention medical or partnered up to follow a nurse or a medical professional.
So internship?
An internship.
Okay.
But an unpaid internship.
Yep, still.
Unpaid.
Good experience. All right. Is there any other questions on that one or comments? I hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and the motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item is item number thirty. If we could have, we do have speakers on that one. Should we have the motion first? Okay, we can have a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve Contact Contract twenty-three dash fourteen dash R E C dash zero-one with Authentics LLC and Pro Vote Solutions for ballot fraud countermeasures at cost noted in the attached pricing proposals effective July the eleventh, twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. David Stevens.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
All right. Yeah, these are the responses in the RFP. So we're just fulfilling the costs and saying we need.
I can hear clearly. Can you?
Yeah, you, you might need to just speak up a little.
I'll get closer to my laptop. Is that better?
It's better. Try.
Okay, these are responses to the RFP for the ballot security grant. We've already provided payment for the first vendor. These are vendors two and three. The, the cost that they're asking for is their proposed cost in the RFP. So we're going to reimburse them for that so they can drive on with task one and two of this grant.
Okay, so.
I have a question about a statement that he just made. We've already done something with the first vendor. And to the best of my recollection, it said in the grant when we received it that all these would have to come before the board. And I certainly don't remember another vendor coming before the board.
Yeah, it was there about two and a half months ago with Runback.
That did not come before the board.
Sure did. Check your notes. It was a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars.
Now you're talking about a payment. I'm talking about asking us to accept an RFP proposal from them.
Okay, Runback is in the state contracting system. So they didn't have to do an RFP. These two companies are not. So they had to go through a different set of rules to qualify and get paid.
Well, they may have qualified, but it's still, you know, even if you're a qualified vendor, you have to come through. It says in the grant, no award will be made to any vendor without prior approval from the Cochise County Board of Supervisors.
And you, the board did approve it and you paid the, the money.
We paid it after the fact. We didn't approve the vendor.
No, 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 they, they did no work until they got received, they received the cash. Until you approved that, and I don't have the exact date, but it's one one of your agendas. Probably in April, I would think.
I have another couple of questions, Mr. Stevens. One of them is the, the deadline for this grant.
Yes, it's been extended to the end of the year.
Hmm, we haven't gotten that in writing either, have we?
No, you have not. If you wanted or writing off.
How can we be making RFPs and accepting these things when we don't? I mean, this, the grant was supposed to die April the fifth. And I haven't seen anything in writing that it's been extended. Word amount doesn't count.
I don't know where you got April the fifth at. I was initially required to have a, a report to the state senate on May thirty-first. And I was given permission by them to extend it as long as they needed. I thought I'd be able to have it all done by the end of the year, so that's the day that I chose. I will get something in writing for you if that's what you desire.
Would it maybe be appropriate to have that at our next meeting? Would that, would that particularly hamper your ability to, to secure these contracts?
Yeah, they're not going to do any work until they receive this money.
Right, but could they wait two more weeks?
Probably.
So we can tie up all those loose ends?
Yeah, I, I don't know the status of the legislature. I know they recessed. I don't know where they're at. If they were actually up there in session, I'd be confident I could get it in time. But I don't know if the people have scattered. They tend to take a month off their time. Very odd, never seen that happen before. So I, I'll contact them today, but I don't, don't know if I can get ahold of the right people.
I, I really don't think that we should act on something that, that, the deadline was April the fifth. We know it's passed April the fifth. There's nothing in writing that says it's been extended. And you've seen other grants and everything that comes before us that says we're extending this grant until blah, blah, blah.
And that is?
It hasn't come to this one. So how can we act on it?
That's correct. I just want to make sure we're not going to lose our position. The legislature, after, because it sounds a little bit like maybe after we vote on this, then the legislature will vote again or? then the legislature will vote again, or, you know, have to approve somehow. It, I don't understand that part either. So, I mean, that's okay. But I don't know why they couldn't do that when they're not in session. Like you said, it could, might be a whole month before they come back, even if they don't sign a die.
Well, what, what is the rush?
So, yeah, I'm kind of asking you that. Is there a rush? Can we wait two weeks?
Yeah, two weeks is not a problem.
Okay.
The reason it's been delayed now is the reason it's been delayed so long is the supply chain issue trying to get the paper. This should have been a six-week thing back in January. But, uh, the, the paper acquisition were months out at that point. But I don't have a problem getting it from the Senate. I just don't know if the person who could authorize it is around. I got to find out if they are there, if can do it. Granted, they don't do much of their own work as staff, but I don't know if all the staff is still there either. But I'll get on the phone soon. I get off of here, and I'll get something in writing.
All right. So the appropriate thing to do would be to table this measure? Okay, so you won't have to apply for a new, uh, I, agenda item. It will just come up. We will table it to our next regular meeting, which is the twenty-fifth of July.
Does it require a motion?
Yes.
Yes, make a motion, please.
Madam Chair, I move that we table item number thirty, approve contract twenty-three dash fourteen, R E C dash one with Authentics LLC and Pro Vote Solutions for Ballot Fraud Countermeasures at Costs Noted in the attached pricing proposals effective July eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second that motion.
Uh, the motion is to require a date specific, so the next, next date, July twenty-fifth.
Okay, July twenty-fifth.
Yeah.
Okay.
I apologize.
That's all. I move we table item number thirty until July twenty-fifth, which is approve contract twenty-three dash fourteen dash R E C dash zero one with Authentics LLC and Pro Vote Solutions for Ballot Fraud Countermeasures at Costs Noted in the attached pricing proposals effective July first, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second that amended motion, definitely the change of date.
I'm going to ask for help from counsel. What do I do about these? Can I mention them? Or should we just, since it's tabled, they'll just come back next time?
They would have to come back to the next
Okay.
next meeting.
All right. Going to save this for next time. Thank you for participating and speaking up on this matter. And we, when we address this matter, you will definitely be part of that, that, um, you know, right back in, be part of that. So I do appreciate when people speak up. So, all right, item number thirty-one, which is our state and federal legislation. Um, there's not anything like Mr. Stevens just mentioned. There's not anything going on really right now. Um,
Uh, I apologize. I, I was a little distracted. Did I hear the board vote on the motion to table?
Maybe not. I asked a question.
Thank you.
The, our motion to table, item number thirty, all those in favor say aye.
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 The chair votes aye and the motion carries unanimously. All right, item number thirty-one, there is nothing there. Um, I was a bit distracted too. Okay, now we have our report by Richard Carwacha County Administrator.
I'm going to pass on the report for now, because we have plenty of other things to do.
Plenty of other agendas today. Um, Supervisor Cosby. Supervisor English.
No current interview.
Um, I will pass also. Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Oh, the next meeting is immediately following.
It's recess.
Now for, it'll be the Jail District Board of Directors meeting. Adjourned, and we're going to, you would like a recess?
Madam Chair, they would take a recess.
I'm going to vote for a short, short, not vote, but I'm going to support a short recess, um, twenty minutes. Yeah.
So we'll reconvene at eleven fifty-five.
Okay, eleven fifty-five.